Well, that's what, that's what the scuttle buddy.
Morning, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for a pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, freedom of the states of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now, before we get into the formal agenda, have an opportunity for public comment. Does anyone like to take advantage of that? Really?
I did.
Okay. Introduce yourself.
Dawn Blough, Recorder Deeds. I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that I have implemented a new program in my office. Unfortunately, about two weeks ago, I was notified from a notary in our county where her signature and her seal were taken from a document that she had previously notarized and was put on a different document and it was tried to, somebody was trying to steal something. Let's just put it that way. It's under a police investigation. But because of this, I knew my software company had a notary alert program that works in conjunction with my record alert program. So with Yandex and IT's Help, we've been able to implement a program where notary publics in Lebanon County can go on to the Lebanon County website under Recorder Deeds. They can sign up using their name and their commission number. And then anytime a document is recorded in my office that they have notarized, they will be alerted to it and they'll be able to check their records to make sure that it is actually the document that they notarized. Unfortunately, it wouldn't have helped in the situation that happened because that document was not recorded in my office. But at least it's another step of somewhat protection towards property owners and, you know, trying to combat deed fraud. I just wanted to bring that to your attention and thank you for your time. Yes, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Was that a part of an existing program you had or did you create the?
So I have the record alert program that property owners can sign up using their tax number or EPI number.
So you're just using that to?
Right. So it's, it's part of that.
Okay.
So it's just another.
Didn't call anymore for the county.
It's why I use my record improvement. It's a small amount compared to the initial implementation of the overall program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Anyone else for public comment? Now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of our August fifteenth meeting and the workshop and executive session of August twenty first.
I make a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Second, if Dawn didn't have any corrections. We, I just found some small things and I asked her to look at them.
Okay. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved. Sally, good morning.
Receipts of nine four at nine five, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars at ninety-eight cents. Brings us to a total cash of two million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Our expenditures are one million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. The tax claim is sixty-four thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and eight cents. Leaving us a balance of one million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, subject to audit.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the treasurer's report. Any questions for treasurer Newen? If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So ordered. Thank you. Introduce yourself and then you may proceed.
Leanne Shank, Deputy Director of Human Resources. Under resignations and terminations, I have Ron DeCris, full-time, or part-time meal transporter at Area Agency on Aging. Resignation effective August twentieth with the last working day of August twenty-third. Loney Pentras, Social Services Aid One, Case Aid and Children and Youth. Resignation effective August fifteenth. Manuel Hernandez Velez, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail. Resignation effective August twenty-ninth with the last working day of August first. Jeffrey Patches, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail. Resignation effective August twelfth with the corrected last working day of August tenth. Mel Rey Rivera, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail. Resignation effective August twenty-second with the last working day of August eighteenth. Trinity Graff, a Full-Time Booking Agency Agent at the DA's Office, Central Booking. Resignation effective August thirty-first. Michael Ott, Hazmat Chief at the Department of Emergency Services. Retirement effective October twenty-fourth with the last working day of October twenty-third. Patricia Baylor, DJ Office Support One at MDJ Ditsner's Office. Resignation effective September ninth. Alexis Rivera, DJ Office Support One, Casual Part-Time at MDJ Ditzer's Office. Resignation effective August thirtieth. Sharon Schaefer, Collections Officer at Probation Services. Termination effective August twenty-first. Michael Laurie, Full-Time Direct Support Aid at Renova. A removal, no show on date of hire. Effective August twelfth. And Tracy Boyer, Full-Time Direct Support Aid at Renova. Termination effective August fifteenth.
I make a motion to approve those resignations, terminations as presented in special note. Michael Ott, Hazmat Chief, after twenty-eight years of service. Thank him.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And to add to Michael, he spent a lot of his career at the, at the jail. And served very well there and served in his capacity here with distinction. So we thank him for that. The only other comment before we vote is, this is a trend that's, you know, pretty consistent. Where most of the resignations are coming with, after all the hard work of hiring and training, two years or less. The expectancy is really, has been shrinking for these folks. And we have one, one retirement for twelve positions that left the county. I mean, that's horrendous. It used to be the opposite, people would stay to retirement and you had to get one resignation here or there. Now it's been the opposite. So we just, I don't have an answer, just the observation that all HR does is, you know, keep the wheel going and try to find qualified candidates and then we train them for twelve weeks and and they're here for another, you know, couple of months. And that's, that's, I don't know what the answer is, but it's, it's not good. Any other comments? Sorry to go off on that.
I think it's a typical challenge that most employers face right now in the labor market. So and that's off to HR for any of their hard work and all of our managers to try to keep those positions filled.
The workforce is definitely shrinking.
Not here, especially.
All over.
Okay. Anything else? Well, in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Leave of absences, I have Deborah Johnson from the Sheriff's Office at one week LOA, all PTO, effective August thirtieth with an expected return to work date of September ninth. Brittany Conade, Probation Services, twelve-day leave of absence, all PTO, effective January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five with an expected return to work date of February third, twenty twenty-five. James Piles, Area Agency on Aging, a thirty-day leave of absence, moving into unpaid status on August thirtieth. The LOA is effective on August sixth with an expected return to work date of January, or I'm sorry, September fourth. Donald Rusnick, Sheriff's Office, a six-to-nine-week LOA, all unpaid, effective August ninth. Return to work is to be determined. Audrey Booker, Building Security, up to a four-week leave of absence, all unpaid, effective September fourth with a return to work date to be determined. Linda Taylor, Area Agency on Aging, six-month intermittent leave of absence. Effective August twelfth and it ends on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve the leaves of absences as presented.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve those leaves. Any questions? If you're in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Under changes of status transfers and demotions, I have a motion to approve the recommendation of Area Agency on Aging. Administrator Adriania Laser to reclassify a position within her agency from the current Admin Assistant Three at a grade eleven on the non-union salary chart to an Administrative Officer One position at a grade twelve on the non-union salary chart, effective September second, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Director Laser's request. Any comment or discussion? If you're in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Another motion to approve the recommendation of Area Agency on Aging Administrator Adriania Laser to create two interpreter stipends within her agency at the rate of one thousand five hundred dollars annually. Payments per rated from effective date on September first, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those interpreter stipends. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Motion to approve a voluntary clerk of court, Barbara Smith. Request to permit the second deputy within the clerk of court's office the ability to work overtime and be paid the time in accordance with the union collective bargaining agreement at the, at time and one-half or all hours worked over their normal work schedule. Maximum OT hours worked per week shall not exceed two point five hours. Hours worked shall be Monday through Friday, no weekends, effective September ninth, twenty twenty-four, for six to eight weeks. Term date of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, or November first, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the voluntary's request. Any comment? Anything for me, Mark? Okay. If no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Final motion to approve Chief Public Defender Megan Tidwell's request to permit two of her administrative employees, Larissa Rivera and Leslie Ortiz, the ability to work overtime and be paid in time in accordance with the union collective bargaining agreement at time and one-half of all hours worked over their normal workday. Maximum OT hours worked per week shall not exceed ten hours. Hours worked shall be Monday through Friday, no weekends, effective August twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. For eight weeks. Term date of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the transaction as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the public defender's request. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Charlene Keeney, a promotion from Admin Assistant Three to Admin Officer One in Area Agency on Aging at the rate of one thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents biweekly, effective September second. Abigail Greenawalt, promotion from Caseworker One, Caseworker Two, and Children and Youth at the rate of one thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents biweekly, effective September fifteenth. Cooper Smith, change of status from full-time telecommunicator to casual part-time telecommunicator in Department of Emergency Services at the rate of twenty-one dollars and ninety-six cents per hour, effective September fifteenth. Derek Ginry, promotion from PO Two to PO Two Assistant Supervisor in Probation Services at the rate of two thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents biweekly, effective September fifteenth. Austin Carpenter, promotion from Deputy Sergeant to Lieutenant in the Sheriff's Office at the rate of two thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-one cents biweekly, effective September fifteenth. And James Hunt, promotion from Full-Time Deputy to Deputy Sergeant in the Sheriff's Office at the rate of twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents per hour, effective September fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? If you're in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Under new hires, I have Agency on Aging. Would like to hire Bonner Davis as a volunteer residential coordinator, one, at the rate of one thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-three cents biweekly, effective September twenty-third. Community Action Partnership would like to hire Luz Vasquez as a part-time receptionist at the rate of fourteen dollars and three cents by an hour, effective September ninth. Community Action Partnership would like to also hire Glenda Folsom as a part-time reentry coordinator at the rate of seventeen dollars and forty-three cents an hour, effective September sixteenth. Department of Emergency Services would like to rehire the following two people. Colby Johnson as a casual part-time telecommunicator at the rate of twenty-one dollars and fifty-three cents an hour, effective September ninth, and Tyler Greiff as a full-time telecommunicator at the rate of nineteen dollars and twenty-eight cents an hour, effective September ninth. President Judge Tilwalk and MDJ Wolf would like to hire Catherine Bilts as a DJ Office Support One at the rate of nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cents biweekly, effective September ninth. President Judge Tilwalk and Probation Services would like to hire Maggie Shiplet as an Office Support Two at the rate of one thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-four cents biweekly, effective September ninth. And Renova would like to hire Rose Young as a casual call direct support eight at the rate of sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents an hour, effective September thirtieth.
Nice question. Is this the Luz that's in the library?
No.
Oh, okay. I didn't know her last name. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the transactions as presented.
We moved the seconded. My only observation is that the long-awaited reentry coordinator is here. And it's, that, that's been a vacant position for a long time, very vital to the folks that are being, you know, finishing their sentences at the, at the correctional facility. So that's a, that's a very important hire. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Moving on to salary, salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Jay Arenas is an Aging Care Manager Two at Area Agency on Aging. Adding interpreter stipend to his position at the per-rated at fifteen hundred dollars per rated for twenty twenty-four, effective September first. And Para Neopenny, Adult Abuse Investigator with Area Agency on Aging, also adding interpreter stipend to her position at fifteen hundred dollars, also per-rated for twenty twenty-four, effective September first, twenty twenty-four. Brandon Batts, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail. A three-year, one-time longevity payment of five hundred dollars, effective September twentieth. Leneris, Daniel Leneris, Parater, Assistant District Attorney One in the District Attorney's Office. A three-year longevity increase of two thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents, effective September thirtieth. And Thomas Edling, Probation Officer One, Probation Services, a one-time, three-year longevity payment of one thousand two hundred and ten dollars and seven cents, effective September twentieth.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those salary board transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? If you're in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So ordered. Thank you. Morning.
Hi, Holly.
Please introduce yourself from the floor. It's yours.
Good morning. Holly Lakey, Administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention. Welcome. I'm here this morning to present contract amendments for our providers for two different fiscal years. So I'll begin with contract amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. There are nine amendments. The total is forty-two thousand, forty-six dollars. That's two for mental health, five for early intervention, and two for intellectual disabilities. All were due to additional units needed to cover services that were delivered during the fiscal year. The amendments will be covered through our allocations and our budgets. Therefore, we are not asking for any additional county tax dollars to cover these expenditures. And again, the total is forty-two thousand, forty-six dollars.
Motion to approve those amendments as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
And then also for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, contract amendments. There are five amendments, a total of sixty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's four for early intervention and one for intellectual disabilities. Four of the amendments were to increase units due to service utilization, believe it or not, already in the fiscal year. And one was for a new provider contract to cover emergency respite for an individual. Again, all amendments will be worked into our current budget and allocations. Therefore, we are not seeking any additional county tax dollars to cover these expenditures.
Make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve those contract amendments. Any questions regarding the motion? If you're in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Thank you so much.
Erin, good morning. And company.
I didn't get the memo for the polka dots or whatever. Then they, maybe they're not polka dots, but from here, they kind of look like polka dots.
Good morning. If you introduce yourself and your colleagues and then proceed.
My name is Erin. We are the Administrator for Lebanon County Children and Youth. With me is Kelly Demme. She is our Fiscal Operations Officer and Audrey Fortna, who is the Director of Probation Services. We're here today to present a bunch of items. Fourth quarter invoices, our final report for fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four. Our implementation budget for current fiscal year, needs base for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, as well as service and provider contracts. First, we have our fourth quarter invoices for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four in the total amount of three million, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, sixty-one dollars. And I would ask that you approve our fourth quarter invoices.
Motion. Make a motion to approve those invoices as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions regarding the motion? If you're in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those same signs. So moved. Just before you go, I just want to thank for all the work that has gone into this, you know, very formidable presentation. So it's a lot. And I know you guys are doing the best with trying to, you know, watch the expense side of things and so on. But what's really vital is the quality of the work that you guys are doing in behalf of the county. So I just, I know a lot goes into this and just wanted to acknowledge that.
Next, we have our final report for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we were certified at twelve million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars with a county share of two million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We came in at twelve million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, five dollars, which is an over expenditure of two hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Our county share is projected to be two million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is actually a decrease of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-three, or twenty-three dollars under the certified amount. And this is due to an increase in children who qualified for federal four-year funding. So even though we were overspent, the county share actually went down from the original amount that was projected. So children and youth spent a total of ten million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and was overspent in the amount of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Probation spent a total of two million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and was underspent by one hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. I would ask that you approve our final report for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the final report.
Second. If there's a motion and a second on the floor, any questions regarding the motion for twenty-three, twenty-four final report? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Next, we have our implementation budget for our current fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So our implementation budget, which was approved last year, is certified at thirteen million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars with a county share of three million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. With an additional, with the additional renovation costs and increases in fees associated with the agency's legal counsel, we actually anticipate our projected spending to be somewhere around fourteen million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and five dollars with a county share of two million, nine hundred and five thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. The county share actually looks like it will decrease for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five as well because we were able to move more programs from our Act one forty-eight to our grants portion of the budget, which has a higher state reimbursement rate. So we ask that you approve our implementation budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve that implementation budget as presented.
Second.
Jamie, have you?
Yeah, just the, the mention of the renovation costs and such that are in there. Those are for space renovation here in the courthouse that will benefit Children Youth Agency. They have, and the states are well aware that they have been struggling with space challenges for several years now. We did some improvements upstairs in twenty eighteen. Feels like it was last year, but anyway, that long ago. So we're going to do some expansion into the other side of the building. And with the state being aware of it, they've inserted a significant amount in here, about a million dollars of renovations. Hopefully the state will, will fund, but that is a one-time. So that won't be, you know, your next budget will, will drop that. So of the two million extra, it's, a million of that is, is completely renovation.
Hopefully they'll be sympathetic to that and any other questions or comments regarding this motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those same signs. So moved.
We have our needs-based budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-six. Our needs-based budget request is fifteen million, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars with a county share of three million, sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which is an increase from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five implementation budget. Again, due to increase in renovation costs and asbestos abatement and removal for new office space in the municipal building. We understand that this renovation is going to likely go across at least two fiscal years. So we've kind of divided up the costs amongst that. And also due to provider increases, which are required, so that programs will accept our children into their placements and programming. And actually, the county share for this is lower for our needs-based budget, even though our budget is going up. It's lower than was anticipated initially for our implementation budget this year. And again, we were able to move some programs around to get that higher reimbursement rate from the state and really utilize our money more wisely. But I would ask that you approve our needs-based budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Make a motion to approve the needs-based budget as presented.
Second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? If you're in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those same signs. So moved.
Next, I have our service provider contracts for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So we have a total of twenty-eight service provider contracts. Eight of those providers are not requesting any increases to our new programs for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And the remaining eighteen providers have requested increases with an average of five percent overall. I would ask that you approve our service provider contracts for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five service provider contracts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those twenty-four, twenty-five contracts. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs. So moved.
We have our placement provider contracts for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. We do have a total of sixty-one placement provider contracts. However, we're still waiting on OCYF to approve twenty-two of those providers' rates. So we will be providing or presenting a portion of those contracts today and then we'll come in later to do the a portion of those contracts today, and then we'll come in later to do the presentation. So today, we're presenting thirty-nine provider contracts. And then the providers that are being presented today, six of them are not requesting an increase. The remaining thirty-three providers have requested increases with an average of ten point five percent, all of them being within the state-approved rates. These increases, again, are due to increasing wages to attract employees, increased costs for insurance and services needed for more specialized trauma-informed care. Placement providers, just as we are as the County Children Youth Agency, are seeing more complex, more difficult children, so they're requiring high level, higher level of care, higher level of service. So they are really increasing their rates to be able to accommodate those children. So I would ask that you approve our placement provider contracts for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve those contracts as presented.
Second. It's moved and seconded that we approve the placement provider contracts for twenty-four, twenty-five. And acknowledged ten point five percent is a big number. Within the state-approved rates, this just tells you where things are in terms of the competition for, as we were talking about earlier here. It's everywhere throughout the state.
I would like a point of clarification, please. Are we approving all sixty-one or just the thirty-nine that you need now?
Just the thirty-nine today. I'll come back and do the rest, yeah.
Anything else? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved. Yes, we may.
Just want to expand on something I'm sure Philip said earlier. Appreciation for the work that goes into this. I want to recognize the fiscal staff. They have been, Kelly came in after a series of turnover in that, in that part of the, of the department. And there have, there were millions in reimbursements to recoup. There were audits to catch up on. There are still audits to catch up on the, the budget to prepare. And I know that if I'm not calling about one of them, I'm calling about the other. Where are we on this one? Where are we in that one? Same controller's office. Everyone needs to know, you know, when is this going to be? And I just want to say thanks for, for the effort. I know you've shuffled some vacations at times and it, it, you've come a long way.
Thank you.
A lot of that money that was, that was owed to us by the state but not invoiced yet is caught up. So just really appreciate that. I wanted to say something.
Cheers.
You're very grateful. Thank you.
God bless you.
Audrey, anything? You good?
Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me. Can I just say one thing? Joe Ellen is two words. So when you type up the speakers, maybe you want to make a note of that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
I'm an entire crew of individuals. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dawn Watson. I am a, what am I, a neighbor insights and qualitative research specialist at the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank. And we are here today to celebrate and acknowledge Hunger Action Month, which is across the entire month of September. And one way that the food bank likes to engage with our local governments is to come in and talk about the experience of our neighbors who are visiting our food pantries and otherwise accessing food resources in each individual county.
Dawn, may I just interrupt that?
Yes.
Would you introduce the we?
Absolutely.
Just so that we have an idea who
Yes, one hundred percent.
who they represent.
So that's my next statement to make. The Central Pennsylvania Food Bank is partnered with the Lebanon County Food Access Task Force. And we have several representatives of that organization here today, and I will actually let them self-introduce. So we'll start with.
Hi, I'm Lori Crawford. I am with Penn State Health. I'm the Project Manager for the Food Access Program, and I co-direct the Task Force with Dawn.
I am Maria Fisher. I am here at LCC. I'm the Director of our food programs. Captain, sorry.
Captain Kendall Lahira, I'm the past Director of the Salvation Army.
Child Overhead, Executive Director of the Karen Herbert and Jones Town Library Pantry.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
So this group of individuals represents just a small fraction of the folks who are participating in our Food Access Task Force. We had a brief flyer that we provided that actually lists all of our food access partners as well as the goals of the task force, which are focused mostly on food access, which would make sense because that's what the task force is called. Particularly focused on the needs of children and both school-aged and like younger-than-school-aged children here in Lebanon County. Also ensuring that any individual who is seeking access to food resources knows where to go, knows when to go, and knows who to contact in order to receive that assistance. And building up a network where we are all collaborating across health systems, community organizations, and our regional organizations such as the food bank to provide nutritious food to anybody who identifies themselves as being in need. And so essentially, what we are here for today is to ask, you know, the Commissioner's Office to join with us for the proclamation about the, about Hunger Action Month and the need for continued support of all of our organizations that are doing very critical work in addressing this need.
I think we can accommodate that because we happen to have a proclamation prepared. Jamie, would you like to read that?
Sure. Whereas hunger and food insecurity are issues of vital concern in Pennsylvania, where according to Feeding America, over one point five million individuals, one in eight Pennsylvanians and one in every six children experience food insecurity. In Lebanon County, one in eight neighbors and one in seven children are food insecure. And whereas adequate nutritious food has become more expensive and out of reach for many neighbors with food costs increasing more than twenty-seven percent, leading to record demand for charitable food. And whereas food insecurity, the condition of limited or uncertain access to adequate food, is associated with numerous adverse social and health outcomes and is a critical public health issue. And whereas Lebanon County is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every corner of our communities and to provide additional resources to those in need. And whereas Lebanon County is committed to working with Central Pennsylvania Food Bank to educate people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank distributed over sixty-eight point five million pounds of food in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four to Pennsylvanians experiencing food insecurity. In Lebanon County alone, three point one million pounds of food were distributed. And whereas public and private entities, including policymakers, business leaders, community activists, farmers, concerned citizens, and hunger relief organizations must collectively work to address food insecurity within the Commonwealth. And whereas the month of September has been designated nationwide as Hunger Action Month to raise awareness of the issue of hunger and mobilize our legislature and the public to help end hunger in America. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the Lebanon County Commissioners, do hereby prove, do hereby recognize September twenty-two, twenty-four as Hunger Action Month in Lebanon County, Pennsylvania, and we call this observance to the attention of our citizens.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it has been duly seconded to for this proclamation. And I do applaud you for pulling all these different agencies together. And, you know, that's a beautiful thing about Lebanon County. We have a lot of coordination to attack a problem, and we see that in other aspects of our, you know, volunteer and also just agencies that we support, not-for-profits throughout the county. So thank you. Any questions regarding this proclamation, motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
You asked that this task force is a kind of a subcommittee of the Community Health Council. And I know Commissioner Coons is on that, that, on our board meetings. And so I encourage you, as we have our meetings and we get report out at the Community Health Council Board meetings, that information continues to be shared to you throughout the year because it's ever-evolving. And I know these amazing humans behind me do the heavy load and the heavy lift of feeding everyone in our community. And I know that you could really use this of your ongoing support.
Great.
Oh, it's all of us.
Sorry, are you taking?
Yes. She said you should endorse yourself as that.
Thank you so much.
All right, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Introduce yourselves.
Matt Beugley, County Solicitor. I have one item for consideration for the board this morning. This is a proposed lease agreement between the County Area Agency on Aging and the Borough of Myers Town. This is pertaining to the Senior Activity Center located in Myers Town. Presently, the, the location is located at the Myers Town Baptist Church. The Administrator for Area Agency on Aging, Ms. Laser, indicated to me that, that the space right now, we've essentially outgrown the space that we presently utilize at the Baptist Church. It is the most heavily utilized senior activity center in the county. Approximately two hundred and fifty of our residents use it every month. And so working with the Borough Manager in Myers Town and their Solicitor Attorney, Amy Leonard, we have negotiated a lease agreement, and I'll just summarize very briefly. The, the term of the lease agreement will be from October first, twenty-twenty-four this year to December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five. There is an increase in the amount, in the monthly amount that we will, that the area agency will be paying. It's, the increase is going to be from six hundred and twenty-five dollars a month to a total of one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars a month. This is for increased, increased space using the facility. Also, over the, the term of the lease, it is a total increase of twelve thousand, nine hundred, five dollars and sixteen cents. However, Administrator Laser indicated that there will be no additional funds needed for the county to, to make this move. Funds from three current vacant positions over the course of one month can actually make up the amount, the budgeted amount to cover the difference from what we are paying now for the Baptist Church to now to the Borough of Myers Town.
Sir, just repeat that. I missed that first part of that.
Yes.
Making up what? Will make up that difference?
Yeah, so funds from three current vacant positions
Oh, I got it.
for one month, yeah, will make up the, the twelve thousand, nine hundred and five dollar difference. So because of that, it is no additional cost to the county for area agency to make this move. So with that, yes.
I do have a question. The increase in cost, is that because there are amenities included like heat, light, water that were not included and were paid separately with the other?
Well, yeah, and, and there are, not only is it a much larger space, my understanding too, that the, the use of the kitchen at the, at the old, the current Myers Town location at the church, that was limited. It's now going to be more expanded here at this facility. Also to, yeah, so of the, of the one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars of that total amount, two hundred and fifty dollars per month is going to be used for a gym as well. And so to answer your quest, your question, yes, there are, there are new, new amenities available.
Well, you ready for a motion?
Yes.
Let me take a motion. Okay, now that's discussion, further discussion.
Would you like a second?
Sure.
I'll take a second on that.
The other enhancement to me is the location. Being in town rather than out in the, I think you're, that's going to show that two hundred and fifty number is going to go much higher and so the utilization will be higher. So it's, I think it's a good move all the way around for access and for, you know, the amenities. Any, any comments regarding that? Motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All same signs, so moved.
That's all I have. Thank you.
That's very good. Thank you. Morning.
Good morning. Danielle Hall, Chief Information Officer, information technology services. I am here to request signatures for two different agreements. One is the DefNet software agreement. It is, we've had this for five years. We'd be doing an additional five-year renewal. We have removed the planning module due to information not being populated in that at this time from our current assessment CAMA system because we can't dump it into there until there's a full-blown reassessment because valuation method is different. So we've removed that module. There's a ten percent increase over five years. And with removing the planning module, we are saving twelve hundred dollars annually across the contract.
Okay, motion.
Make a motion to approve the DefNet agreement. I believe that's eighty-two thousand, three twenty-eight forty over the course of the.
That's correct.
It's been moved and seconded that we renew that DefNet contract at the mentioned rates. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Thank you. And the second one is for an I-series programmer. It's a support retainer. Our current I-system programmer analyst is out for an undetermined amount of time. This would provide us the support that we need. It would be a weekly, weekly retainer of four hours for the programming. The retainer will be billed at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour. Anything over four hours per week, the additional hours will be billed separately. Any additional projects would be split accordingly.
Make a motion to approve, approve that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions regarding this retainer for IT? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for taking the lead in this.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
All right. Morning.
Morning. Brian Dieterich from the Lebanon County District Attorney's Office. On behalf of the District Attorney's Office, I come before the Board of Commissioners seeking approval to apply for the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency funding under the twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six grant period for RASA, the Rights and Services Act slash VOJO, the Victims of Juvenile offenders Act. The grant period is to run from January one of twenty-two-five through December thirty-one of twenty-two-five. In the memorandum, I've included the goal and purposes, the objectives of RASA and VOJO. It is notable that this is a fixed funding announcement. PCCD, the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, has allotted a dollar amount to each of the sixty-seven counties of the Commonwealth. Lebanon County is allocated a hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred, twenty-seven dollars under that period, eighty-two thousand, sixty-four dollars under the RASA portion, twenty-nine thousand. $29,863 under VOJO. That represents a 5% cut from the previous RASA-VOJO grant period. That is consistent with what we had previously presented regarding the VOCA, the Victim of Crime Act Grant Renewal. As a result, that then has a trickle down into the budget itself. The grant application deadline is September 27. We are currently in the process of breaking down each individualized subcategory. On page two, you'll see that there is an allocation for personnel under RASA and VOJO. There's an allocation for employee benefits under each of the grants, travel and training, as well as supplies and operating expenses. So at this point in time, and and those numbers on page two are a 5% decrease over the previous grant. So I've provided that information as well. At this time, we're seeking approval from the Commissioners to apply, and I've brought a signature page for once the board is finished with its business to have the signatures affixed and then distributed so we can then apply for the grant.
Make a motion to approve the RASA/VOJO grants as presented.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any additional questions or comments regarding the motion? Yes, Jim?
To quick question, that state money that was, that comes to the county?
That is correct. That's the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and.
Said, yeah, and then the the cut, why, they give a reason why there was a decrease over, over last year's grant?
No, it's, it, I think the common sense answer is there's a little bit less state money floating around and there's a little bit less federal money floating around, and as a result, we're feeling the trickle down of that.
That has nothing to do with crime being down?
No. And and as a matter of fact, there has been a consistent diminution of these funds over the past several grant cycles.
Often billed in by the county if needed.
Right. The the county is ultimately the catch, the catch to make up the difference.
Any other questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs. So moved.
Thank you. Counselor. For for future reference, you know, again, I took over from Attorney Eisenhardt, and it's sort of work in progress. Is there other information that you would like to see included in these? Is there additional information?
Actually, more timely information. Jamie and Dawn worked to get us a packet the day before so we can read them the night before and be prepared for the meeting. So if you don't mind getting it 24 hours earlier so Dawn can get the packets to you, that would be a big help.
Apologies. That's, that's one of those gaps that I don't know what you mean to discuss.
So that's why I, you asked, I verbalized.
Your presentation was very concise. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With with that, I'll just shut up and get out.
I can take it now.
Concise.
Please don't share with my wife that I can take it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a number of items here to work through, some, some heavy, some light. Pardon me. Clear my throat here. First one I have is a right-of-way agreement with UGI. This is for service to the Lebanon Wastewater Treatment Plant in North Cornwall Township. The county owns land across the street along Ridgeview Avenue. And in order to make a connection, UGI needs a right-of-way. There is a diagram that's attached and in the hatched in area. The hatched area indicates the right-of-way that they're seeking. It's, it's just 409 square feet, 10 feet wide and about 30 feet long, give or take. And again, this would enable connection for the wastewater treatment plant that they need to accomplish some of their upgrades.
Motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any questions regarding this motion? If they're not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Post same signs. So moved.
I have a Architect Services Agreement with Beers Hoffman Architecture for what we've, what we're deeming Phase 1A of municipal building renovations. This involves the Public Defender and the Assessment Office. I'll tell you that going back to actually 2018, we began looking at the Public Defender's Office. We had on paper some diagrams of how we might reconfigure and expand that office at the time. They were running out of space. COVID came along, took care of that for us for a while, and we weren't in quite the demand for space and some turnover with, with what we've dealt with in terms of employee turnover over the last several years, sort of relieved that for a while. But we are clearly back in a space crunch. The Public Defender's Office, I think, is one away from fully staffed. If not, will be soon. And there, they have two and three people crammed into places down there. And so at the same time, the Assessment Office, when we built the addition to the courthouse 25 years ago now, the Assessment Office was built with several islands included to store some of the large assessment records. I'm doing this because they're, you know, they were very large books. Those have been, since been digitized to be a lot more convenient and accessible and made available to the public even. And so many of those areas that were storage for hardcover books are no longer needed. So we will be able to move the Public Defender's Office, expand it over into the other side of the wall of assessment. Assessment, be able to consolidate a bit with their staff to be able to provide for that room. So it's just a block of the, of the first floor of the addition being reconfigured, some walls moved. This is the, by far, the easiest part of the renovations to do. There is no asbestos or any other challenges that that face us in that part of the building because it's the most recently constructed. So what I, again, this has been something that's been worked on for years, but we're ready to move forward. There is a design. Worked with both of the department heads there very closely. And so this document or this agreement is, is the fee structure for all of the professional services involved with doing this, preparing for bid, which we hope to do in the next, in the next month or two. What you have before you totals are not to exceed of $94,110. I'll break that down. Construction documents, so it includes design development from the concept plan forward. This is some work that we, that we have already done. That is a lump sum fee of $29,950 for Beers Hoffman. Also a lump sum for Mechanical, Electrical and Plumbing Engineering Services, which they're just about to begin, of $27,245. Furniture, furniture selection, interior design coordination services with the meeting with department heads and, and designing the layouts. It's $6,500. Those are all fixed lump sum costs, $63,695. The remainder are billed hourly as needed for the most part, so there's an allowance not to exceed there. Those are, those are bidding phase services, mechanical bidding phase services, construction administration, which is oversight during construction by Beers Hoffman, also oversight by more engineering, and then any reimbursable expenses, and that's $30,415. So all total, $94,110. We, we do have capital funds allocated and, and identified for this. However, for the end of the year, we may, we may be dealing with a little bit more ARPA shuffling. And so I think there's a possibility for utilizing that for these funds. We're awaiting the bid on the towers for DES, which we hope to have at the next meeting. They believe that's going to be a lesser number because they're doing fewer towers. So my hope is with you to reallocate some of that and start covering some of these costs since it has to do with, with space and, and better use of space, which is an ARPA eligible. So all of that said, I'm asking for your approval on this services agreement for Phase 1A.
Make a motion to approve the Beers and Huffman project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this agreement. Any questions? Yes.
Jamie, ARPA has to be designated by the end of this year.
Yeah.
December 31.
Correct, and spent by the end of '26.
Spent by the end of '26. Do you anticipate with where Bob's coming in and what monies you might have left over for ARPA, knowing that you have a deadline at the end of this year? Other things that need to be done here? Is there a bigger grand plan that's all part of that that you might be able to still slide that in before the end of the year?
Yeah.
How's that money going to flush out? I mean, I know you don't have those bids yet, but they are doing less towers.
Well, we're going to have to do estimates on them. We're still, we're still trying to get a handle on, on what and how to do to deal with the asbestos. There's, you know, anywhere from full abatement, you know, taking space down to a, down to a clean shell and starting over to working around it or encapsulating it possibly, you know, in some areas. So working with a consultant that does that to see where we are. They've gotten some estimates, but I don't have anything, you know, they've just been top of the head estimates. So they are currently working on coming up with a plan for that. So my, my goal is that by the end of the year, deliver to the Commissioners estimates that we can use to finish out the encumbrance of the ARPA. Between this and there's still some other projects, I think, that have expressed interest that the Commissioners are entertaining. So all in all, answer your question, yes, we'll have it all allocated by the end of '24, some of which will go to this. But we're still gathering estimates. We had, we had to do a bit of that for Children and Youth Services, you know, their estimate. I think we used $120 a square foot for renovation costs, $30 a square foot for abatement. I don't know whether those will pan out in a bid, but those are, those are fair estimates based on other projects that have been done in central Pennsylvania by, by the architect we're working with. So they gave us the estimates. That answer? All right.
We have a motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs. So moved.
And and there's a larger look at the rest of the building. I've met with other department heads, Sheriff, DA, HR, elections, on and on, to, to figure out where we're going to put them and how.
Sheriff's Department has needs, yeah.
Well, when I sat here and talked about the Public Defender's Office having three people in a room, he's sitting over there saying, yeah, I got four.
Gather this.
All right. Next, I have Disabled Veterans Exemptions. Pretty significant list here, about close to a dozen. Got Matthew Donner of Old Hickory Lane, Lebanon, Brian Zimmerman of Mine Road, Lebanon, Kim Shore of Grace Avenue, Lebanon, David Howard, Lickdale Road, Fredericksburg, Mark Vermaika, Rose Lane, Jonestown, Alan Farrell, Ladybug Lane, Meyers Town, Grace Hensinger, Stanley Drive, Palmyra, Egan Franks, Barron's Drive, Palmyra, Judith Welker, Hemlock Circle, Mannheim Address, but still in Lebanon County, excuse me, Clark and Clark Hitchcock, Thorndale Drive, Meyers Town.
Make a motion to approve those requests.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? If they're not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs. So moved.
Next, going back to a workshop you had several weeks ago with the American 250 PA Lebanon Commission. Part of the reason or one of the main reasons for that discussion at a workshop was to talk about funding this event going forward or the planning for an event and, and this ultimate celebration of the 250th birthday of, of the country in 2026. And to boil it down, you'll all recall that conversation, and it seemed as though we're heading toward a, a $10,000 allocation to get them started for the remainder of this year and to look at it in the budget. They do already have some expenses. I'll get to that next. But the first thing I would ask is whether you still have some, some discussion to have over that or wherever you want to arrive at it, or simply just a motion for an allocation, so.
My recollection of our last discussion was that they needed to tell us who was going to manage the $10,000 and pay the bills. They were struggling with that. Did they give you an answer?
No, we haven't, we haven't completely hashed that out, I don't think yet. But what they do have is, is reimbursements in hand to be, to be spent. So they already have costs that they've incurred. They've been to some events, they've been to the fair.
Because they, they total.
I have in hand $1,285, but that doesn't include some of the banners and other things that they haven't submitted yet that I, I know are out there, but I don't have an amount on that. But the reimbursables to date are $1,285. Probably, I estimated about $2,000 or $3,000 probably total that they have in hand so far.
But you can handle those piecemeal. Can we get something established?
Yeah, we can handle those. The real, the real challenge is if they have revenue.
Correct.
If they're gathering funds by donations.
Things, yeah.
Yeah.
But we need a motion data to put in place the $10,000 commitment to the end of the year.
Yeah.
Well, I will make a motion. We'll make a motion to approve a $10,000 budget. It was mentioned, and that's why I wasn't sure. That was one of the questions I had from the last meeting. It said Bob Phillips said $10,000, but there was no vote and it, it implied there was, that's all, even though it didn't say.
I think it said he, he indicated he would support a $10,000.
Yeah, I, I just thought that was out of place because there was no vote.
Yeah, I was just reflecting the, the discussion in the minutes.
At any rate, I do make a motion to establish a $10,000 fund for America PA 250 for 2024.
Second.
Make a motion and second to allocate $10,000 to this important endeavor. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs. So moved.
Okay, and I'll, I'll present those to you as they come for approval, and I think I'll do that this time, just to summarize them all. We have some reimbursements to Josie Ames for t-shirts that were purchased, coasters, pens, just little tchotchkes, so to speak, that they handed out at the, at the various events that they attended, as well as some mileage reimbursement to the regional meetings in different parts of the state, Reedsville, Gettysburg. I think there's another one coming up somewhere near State College, which is Reedsville. And other, yeah, some candies and things like that that they had at their tables. So that's $179.56. I have $178.25 for, no, that's for the t-shirts, sorry, the other was for the coasters. And we've got some room reservations for the, an event in Philadelphia that's coming up before 1450 for the members of the commission to, to stay overnight and, and attend all the events there. So again, total $1,285 to date. You just take a motion to.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs. So moved.
And lastly, regarding the American 250, they are requesting the approval of two additional members to the commission. They would be Bonnie Loy of the Daughters of American Revolution and Jane Yordi of Visit Lebanon Valley.
Someone.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we had those two volunteers to the committee. Any questions? If they're not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs. So moved.
Next, I have an application for a loss prevention grant from the Pennsylvania County Risk Pool. As you're well aware, we have these occasionally recommendations from the Safety Committee to spend grant funding that we get from our insurance carrier for property and liability, the Pennsylvania County Risk Pool. They provide $30,000 per year as an incentive to make some improvements or to purchase and implement things that will reduce the county's liability or losses. And at our last safety committee, we improved the, proved to recommend to you the purchase of an automatic external defibrillator at the Area Agency on Aging for $1,279. The, they have an AED currently, but it, it has, it's no longer, parts are no longer available. We have to replace the pads, the batteries, things like that. And, and these devices become obsolete as the, as the, the add-ons improve and change. So it's time for them to replace that. The battery, they had looked at replacing the battery, which they could have done for $189, but they were unable, completely unable to get the pads to update. So they looked at replacing it, and that's the recommendation. So $1,279 loss control grant.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of an AED life pack for AAA.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we buy for this grant. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs. So moved.
Are we applying for the grant or do we already have the $30,000?
We have the $30,000. That's granted annually. This is.
We only need to be be worded.
Oh, you made a motion, so we're going to go with you. It was just.
We're, we're applying. So we don't, we don't have the entire $30,000. It's a, it's a reimbursable grant. So each.
But it's already approved.
Well, it's there available for us. So we submit each of these items as we go.
Okay.
And if you don't draw down all 30,000, you, you don't use it. Yeah. All right, next I have relating to bridges. Uh one of the county's own bridge, county-owned bridges is the. Bridge over the Swetar Creek at the west end of Jonestown. Uh very tall bridge, many are familiar, not everybody's familiar with that bridge. Uh upon inspecting that bridge this past spring. Uh we discovered there was deterioration of the sidewalk. Uh and there's other deterioration, but there was immediate. To uh immediate need to repair deterioration to the sidewalk portion of that bridge. Our engineers recommended a plating, plating over the area for now, which is what we did. Uh we had a tremendous amount of help from the uh Jonestown Borough and. Union Township to get that in place, I think in a matter of a couple of days, so we. We remedied that for the time being, but in the meantime, Pendot said we must come up with a long-term. Uh remedy to the bridge within the next two years. So um as you know, we're in the process of replacing the bridge in Victor's Road. Um and and looking at whether or not to replace. Or what to do with Yordy's Bridge, with Levan's Bridge, with Gulf Road Bridge and so on. The Jonestown Bridge. Um is still open and we want to keep it that way and we want to um. Replace it as needed. So what I'm proposing here from the Wilson Consulting Group. Is an agreement for the initial data collection. On the way to designing, I design and engineering for the uh repair of that bridge. I don't want to commit to any sort of repair. I'll just inform you of some of the discussion that's been had is that um. The bridge, the the superstructure of the bridge seems to be serviceable and okay to continue for years to come. Uh those are the big arches that are over over the creek. Uh the deck itself is in rough condition, the supports underneath and so on. Uh will need to be replaced and the sidewalk is the worst of it. Sidewalk is cantilevered off to the side of the bridge. And what they are, what they are initially proposing, but again, the data will drive the the process here, is um. Removing the entire deck, leaving the superstructure and replacing the bridge with. With precast sections, so it would almost be like you're piecing together a centipede across the bridge. And the sidewalk would would still be cantilevered out to the side, but would have a dividing wall. So it would be much safer for pedestrians right now, there's potential that a vehicle could get off the curb, get up onto the sidewalk, fortunately. By knowledge, that's not happened. Uh but it is an important bridge both for vehicle traffic and pedestrian traffic because it connects Jonestown. To the rail trail, uh the west end. So that's the preliminary thought on how they may go about it, but they have to uh. Study it, collect data and so on. This is the first part of that. This would be again, an agreement with Wilson Consulting Group. For uh the Jonestown Bridge, which we know is County Bridge C O dash thirty six. This is for thirty seven thousand eighty dollars for that initial step. This would be funded through Act thirteen funds, which is Marcella Shale funding that. Uh has been allocated to counties for transportation needs. And we have a healthy balance there. That's what we're using for the Victor's Road Bridge replacement and what we're proposing to do uh to fund this.
Thank you, motion approved that agreement as presented.
It's removed and seconded. Questions? Questions only once. Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved.
Or Jonestown, every time they turn, there's another bridge. Eventually, they'll all be new, and it'll be good. Next and last, I have hotel tax requests. Uh as you know, there are a few of them that you've tabled um as the funding amount replenishes. And in addition to those, the two that are tabled, you have three new ones that have come in since the last meeting. So I'll reiterate the the request, the one is.
Just hit the pause button there. At men treasure or what? Do we have a number?
Oh, I have it. I have it, yeah. Your your balance currently is fourteen thousand nine hundred fifty seven dollars, unencumbered. To recap, the tabled, uh Motorama Productions, which is a uh the. I think it's called Drag Fest, uh which is to be held coming up in the January or February of twenty twenty five. Has requested a grant of seventy five hundred dollars for a total project cost of uh promotion and such of a hundred thousand dollars. They are aware that you have implemented the five thousand dollar max, so that's been made known to them. The other that's been tabled is the is Penn State University Extension for a um. Know these by heart by now, but this is a Penn State Cooperative Extension. Crop Conference to be held at the Lebanon Expo Center on February fourth of twenty twenty five. And they have requested a five thousand dollar grant toward that. You have three new that have come in. One is from the Lebanon Community Theater for an advertising budget. Throughout Lebanon County and neighboring communities, their total project cost for that advertising is six thousand dollars. And they are requesting a grant of four thousand five hundred dollars. Susquehanna Valley Showdown, which is an agricultural show. Um of lambs, goats and swine, which will be held at the Expo Center. This is the twenty twenty five jackpot show. I don't know if I have a specific date here. I see that it says twenty twenty five, but. Okay.
July.
So July of twenty twenty five, they have a total project cost of forty one thousand three hundred thirty five dollars and are requesting five thousand dollars. And lastly, the Hilltop Hilltop Playground Association. Um is having their annual Hilltop Playground Cars for Kids Car Show on September fourteenth, so that's coming up. And they are, they have a total cost of five thousand five hundred dollars. They're requesting four thousand dollars. From you for that. So you have total requests. If I call, if I include Motorama as seventy five hundred dollars, your total requests are twenty six thousand dollars. If I take that off, it would be twenty three five. If I do reduce that to to five thousand dollar request, it's twenty three five. And again, balance is fourteen thousand nine hundred fifty seven.
All right, why don't we just uh take them one at a time and see how far we get and we could table whatever's left until uh there are more funds.
Do you want chronological order again, which is kind of what we.
Definitely.
Okay, so Hilltop Playground comes up on.
Chronicle, as far as submission date. In other words, because some of these were ahead of our, I think, maybe two of them came in ahead of our change in the uh guidelines.
I presented them to you in the order in which they came. We have them numbered. These are twenty through twenty. Twenty, twenty one, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, the others you funded. Uh I was going to give them to you in order of. How they how they uh fall on the calendar.
Yeah, I know that.
However you want it.
The September fourteenth one is, you know, right, it's in the corner, they only came in.
Right, so you have a suggestion?
Yeah, uh uh well. When they come in like this and. I would really like to add a a line that says, how many nights of hotel stays? Do you anticipate? Because I'm looking at some of these. And there's no, I mean, it's a short event. I don't know that there's any hotel stays involved. And that's how we bring the money in, so I think that's an important factor that we're not calculating.
Well, that, well, the, so the policy you approved a month or two ago. It doesn't ask for how many nights, but it asks for documentation of how it will uh. It will result in in hotel stays. It doesn't ask for a specific number of nights.
Yeah, we adopted that about August first anyway.
I understand that, but in in the one, I'm going to say for Hilltop, for instance. It says, well, one guy comes from New Jersey. But it doesn't mean that he's staying overnight. My husband and I did car shows for many years. And, you know, we'd drive to Timonia, Maryland or wherever, and we'd come home the same day. So I'm not getting, I realize now, I'm not getting a clear picture of who is actually generating hotel stays. And I know that's not part of our thing to consider today, but I would like it to be in the future.
Well, I think it is, it is part of what you're considering. I mean, it doesn't say whether that person is staying overnight, and that's up to you to determine it, but. If the person is staying overnight, you have one overnight stay, you know, so I mean, the the criteria includes it. I don't I don't know if every event is going to be able to quantify for you how many people are going to come and stay. So you have, for example, Motorama. They don't know, they know they have out of state participants, but they don't know who's going to stay.
They make a very good argument for support, based on their history and and the number.
Yeah, I guess there's, so there's some, there's just some judgment in this. There's just some on your part to decide if.
I'm just telling you what would help me decide, because, for instance, at the expo, they will bring their big. R Vs and they will park them along the back end and they stay there. They're not staying in hotels. Um so, and I know they can't give us an exact number of hotel stays, but multiple day events would certainly. Help me decide that there would be a bigger chance of hotel stays.
I'm satisfied. We just adopted the changes all over a month ago. That we had been long awaited changes and now we're ready to revise again or asking to to put new language in. I'm fine with what's in there. We have judgment latitude. If we see that there's a question. Uh the playground's a good example. Um under the new guidelines, I don't think that's a fit, but, you know, yes.
I just have a suggestion, take it for what it's worth, but typically when I go to events, there's usually a room block that they. According with these hotels, um and they know who uses them and who doesn't. I don't know if you look at that or not, but maybe something in the future might be in conversation with the hotels and they would know who's staying. And what events they're staying at.
And if I got it again, we don't have enough funds, obviously, to 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 grant all these requests, so we have to start prioritizing and. Rather than dictate specifically what somebody has to put in their application, I think it's incumbent upon each of them to sell their event. And why people are going to stay here. They know what the priority is, that it's heads and beds, as was stated clearly, and I think you can. You gotta continue to state that thing and to comment upon them as much information as as they can to.
I just was curious, I mean, when you say heads and beds, it's not necessarily the people that are. You know, coming with the food trucks for the event, it's for the visitors that are coming to the event necessarily.
Yeah.
Okay.
It could be the people running it, you know, just so that there's tax generated through the hotel stays, yeah. Let's move on to uh talking about the first one, which. In terms of uh timing, it would be the playground. In terms of submission, it would be the Motorama. What's your pleasure?
When do you want to talk about first, the Motorama Productions? Isn't that the last one to be? When is that one being held? January four and five, twenty twenty five? And there's still some in this year?
Uh the Hilltop Playground Association is is this year, obviously, in a couple of weeks. And um.
July.
Which one?
So Susquehanna Showdown is July twenty twenty five.
Trying to find the next one.
Yeah, it it's so confusing because there's no dates on here when theaters are being held.
Well, so community theater, I would say, is next because I'm assuming they're advertising their season. So. But I don't see any dates in.
Yeah, I don't either, yeah.
Okay, where do we want to start? Somebody. I believe the next one is the playground. Is that correct? Why don't we just start there, since that is imminent?
Yeah, this is your last meeting before that event.
Well, I I would like to give them something, but I think four thousand dollars is excessive. Because I don't know that it's going to do heads and beds, so I would suggest we give them uh two thousand dollars.
Second to that. Let's back up then. We have a motion of second, and maybe we can advise in our response that. Because of new guidelines, we may need either more, you know, meat as far as the. Language about the hotel stays, or maybe they're not a fit under these new guidelines, so just so they're aware for next year. We coming in, you know, two weeks ahead of the event puts us in a tough spot. So we have a motion for two thousand dollars. Only once, anybody have any questions, not all in favor of that that two thousand, please submit, give me an aye.
Aye.
I posed, so moved. All right, and that that, again, we did this last year for them. But that's got to be communicated that we got new guidelines. What's next?
Yeah, I think Jamie said that the community theater advertising, because they're doing their booklet, is that correct?
Well, I'm assuming it's a season. I don't, I don't know exactly what. Season is, when when it begins, but.
Put a number out there. Four nine.
I'm I'm just trying to process. How much of this is bringing in outside people and things and I. I know they're advertising locally, but I don't really see advertising. I guess Facebook, but that's two hundred dollars. I want to do something for them again, but I think. The large amount, if it's not overnight stays.
There's a uh, he's put in the second paragraph. Last sentence, the narrative advertising opportunities with Lebanon Valley Transit include interior, exterior bus clings and bus shelter panels. In the Lebanon and Lititz communities, so.
So they're doing it.
Evidently, there's like Eastern County location.
Well, then I'll move to approve the forty five hundred.
Hey, that's for lack of a second. Any other thought?
And I would uh sure that I'd like to do something to support the community here, but I don't know for. It's a little higher than than what I would do as special light of our priority of what quote heads and beds, so. I'd I'd make a motion similarly, uh or than two thousand dollars, but playground shows future.
Second.
Right, I. I may go along with this. Uh I'm more inclined to have zero because of the guidelines, but then this came in after the guidelines. Were put in place, but maybe the same thing, we can give them the language for the future that. This may not be the place, you know, for their funding. Okay, any any other comments or observations? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Excuse me, what what did you pass there? There was a forty five hundred and went to two thousand. You suggested zero.
I, no, I said, if I, you know, my, in my head, I was thinking zero because I don't think it's.
You passed to two thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Just unanimously, in light of the uh. Um new guidelines and, you know, they're an important part of our community, but if they don't fit, they don't fit, and I think for next year, they'd have to be. Made aware of that in our response. That that's just, or 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 indicate some better way to uh. Proof that they are going to, you know, be filling hotel beds.
So they have ten thousand nine fifty seven then.
Left.
Leftover, and and. Want to address these today, fine, if not fine, the the ones you have remaining are twenty twenty fives. If you want to let the fund build or if you want to address them, that's entirely up to you.
I'd like to see the fund build personally, but I don't know what the rest feel.
No. We have an oldie, which is the um. Del Voits request. I mean, I'd like to deal with that one, if because it's been around, you know, we've tabled it already and um.
Well, again, I find, I I find this um application. It's it's not acceptable because it says total project cost is twelve fifty and they're requesting five thousand dollars. I have asked, I have this corrected repeatedly and I haven't seen it. And I I'm trying to be respectful but truthful in that I don't think this one deserves anything. And I, I'm trying to be respectful but truthful in that I don't think this one deserves anything.
I, I thought I addressed that at the last meeting. I had messaged Del Voight while we were here, still here. I have that. I still do, but it was, it was not 1250, it was 12.5.
Why wasn't it corrected when it was given to us?
Still the same application. I'll, I'll take responsibility for that, but I thought that I had informed that at the last meeting.
Yeah, we could table it till we stop this. Unless someone else has a earning desire to.
No, I'd like to table them, let the fund build and, and get the, I guess, I have, I can't tell you how many times I asked to have this application corrected. It just wasn't done.
Well, I can just, you can fill in 12.5. Would you want, do you want Del to resubmit an application?
I think that's what you expected us to do.
Yeah.
Del told me they would resubmit the application personally.
Oh.
And this was a long time ago and it never happened and it's still not done.
Oh.
I was promised and he, and, you know, in his defense, he asked someone in the office to resubmit it. If they didn't do their job, I don't know. All I know is I still have 1,250 and that's not right.
Okay. Anything from the floor?
You have appeals.
Yes, we do.
It's a reminder.
130.
Yep.
All right, if nothing else, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Here, we stand adjourned. Thank you for your attendance and your input.